Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, May 3rd, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation in recognition of Older Americans Month, and I know that we have some representatives here from, I'm assuming, the council on aging, and they'll be here to receive this proclamation. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Older Americans Month to recognize the contribution and lives of these citizens and their impact on future generations, and whereas this year's theme is Older Americans Connecting the Community, where older adults should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation, and whereas older adults are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live, and whereas our community can provide recognition and respect for older Americans by increasing opportunities for them to remain independent, by providing services that help seniors maintain connections with the community, and by emphasizing the value of our seniors and their contributions. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of May be known as Older Americans Month in Henry County, during which we recognize the important contributions our older adults add to our community, and encourage all citizens to honor our seniors as well as the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for them as valuable resources in Henry County this third day of May 2011, the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And we would like to present y'all with this proclamation for those who wish to come up for a photograph, and then I believe Rita is going to update us on the great event coming up on Saturday. So if y'all would step over here.
She was. Hey, Judge.
She's right there. She's good now.
And Rita, before you make your comments about the event on Saturday, Warren had something he wanted to say.
Use your five minutes to prepare.
Use what?
Rita gets five minutes to prepare while she has a speech.
Oh, I don't either. I don't have one.
Go ahead.
I just think that recognizing the seniors and three of us can and are qualified to be down there in that same group.
I'm not one of them.
But isn't it amazing, though, that many times when major decisions are made, people want to see a little gray hair making that decision? Isn't that right? That's a fact. Now, the comment I want to make this morning, and I don't mean to single anyone out, but there is one person in this group down here today that's been a lifelong friend of mine and is the epitome of a senior enjoying their golden years, and that's Ms. Janie Upchurch-Magarette. And she has always greeted everybody with a smile. She has wit that is basically indescribable. She is fun to be around, and I just want to say, Ms. Janie, thank you for all you've done, and also the influence that this person has made on so many lives in this county. So even though she's probably not going to tell you that, she has been very much an inspiration in my life. Thank you, Ms. Janie.
And Rita, if you would come up and talk, and you don't act like you're shy, we know better, the Miles for Meals Walk on Saturday.
Well, I'm not shy, but I need a little more than 30 seconds to prepare a speech. But the walk is going, I know, Rita, no I don't, but I have to agree with Commissioner Holder. Ms. Janie is an inspiration. She has walked every year at the Walk since it started, and this is our 17th year. Her kids have walked and her grandkids walk. They walk three generations. So we have one other, Ms. Wilder, that has three generations walking at the Walk. So the Walk is one of these family walks, but we're walking not alone. The Walk is Saturday, and I hope to see everyone there. Starts at, registration starts at nine and the Walk starts at 10:00. The community has stepped up again. We've had wonderful response to sponsorship. We've had a lot of group walkers. We've had new groups that are coming in. And just to reiterate, the money's collected at the Walk, it goes to offset the cost of food for the Meals on Wheels program for our homebound seniors. So every penny counts. So get your collections, come out, and we, Sutherland, has donated probably three-fourths of the food again this year. So we will have hot dogs and hamburgers after the Walk, so come out. We've got the, the fire department's got the clown, the dog's going to be there, we've got a bake sale, the seniors are doing that, and we do have door prizes. So come out and enjoy and have a fun day with us at the Walk, and thank you.
And Rita, this year too, do you have a fun run?
We do have a fun run. I've not had a real good response on that, but registration's at eight and the run starts at nine. For those that don't want to walk, we do have the fun run. Rita won't be running, she'll be over there cheering you on, let's go. I said I have enough trouble waddling, less walking or running. But the run is going to be around the park area and so will the Walk. It's, I like to say, it's a leisurely stroll. People who aren't diehard walkers can get out and do it. The rec has loaned us their limo. We call it the SAG wagon, so if you don't want to walk, you can get on the extended golf cart, and the paramedics confiscate the keys because they said they need it in case someone falls, but they take everyone that's not able or doesn't walk for a ride, they won't forget, around that park. When they come back, most of the seniors' hair look like this. With that visual, I'm going to leave and thank you again.
Thank you, Rita, and thank all of you for everything you do for the seniors in Henry County. We appreciate you very much. Moving on in the agenda to public safety, our first item is a resolution requesting approval to retire a canine from service with the police department and approval of a lease agreement for the care of the canine. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton of the Police Department, exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Kimbo is a 10-year-old Belgian Malinois who has been with the Police Department since December of 2005. Over the last five years, Kimbo has been responsible for over $5 million worth of drug and currency seizures. He has to his credit over 20 apprehensions, and on numerous occasions in both Superior and State Court has been proven to be reliable. Unfortunately, however, due to the rough lifestyle of a police service dog, Kimbo now suffers from an illness that affects his spine, making it more difficult for him to perform the demanding tasks that are expected of him. Because of that, the Police Department requests that Kimbo be allowed to retire, and due to his temperament in that he is a police-trained dog, we would request that he be placed in the care of his former handler, Officer Matt Perry, and that Officer Perry be allowed to lease Kimbo for $1 a year.
Does any Board member have a question or comment about this item? If not, you have a resolution before you that approves this agreement, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, and this is you also, Major Bolton, we have a resolution requesting approval of an RFP for the purchase and installation of an automated license plate recognition system. That's exhibit number three.
The Police Department, back in May of 2010, purchased an automated license plate recognition system, and for those of you that might not know what this is, it's a system capable of reading tag numbers by itself and instantly as the police car passes by them. The problem with the system that we purchased is that it had difficulty reading Georgia tags, which we found to be a bit of a hindrance working here in Georgia. So we spent the better part of last year trying to resolve these issues, but unfortunately to no avail. The company did reimburse the Police Department in full. That money that was used to purchase it was grant money from the 2009 JAG grant. So, once being reimbursed, we sent out another RFP this year, and having learned from our mistakes, previously actually had the two lowest vendors that submitted bids come down to the Police Department to actually put on a demonstration for us. The two personnel that we had to ride along with them were the two men that were there every step of the way with the process last year and knew exactly what we were looking for and what we were not looking for. We had John Shepard, our computer guy with the Technology Services Department, and Officer Limmicks, who was actually the officer that was assigned the system. But just to give you a little bit of information on this, the system is a series of cameras that is mounted on a police car that faces forward, to the rear, and to the side, and basically it is capable of reading thousands of tags a day. And again, it's by itself, without the operator entering any information into the system. It picks up on suspended registrations, stolen vehicles, wanted persons, pretty much any information that we enter into the system, it'll be looking for. So if we have persons of interest in any cases, we can enter those tag numbers if we have them, missing persons, anything like that, it can be searching for automatically and by itself. The two lowest vendors came down and put on this demonstration, and we were more impressed with LSAG as opposed to its competitor for several different reasons. One of those is that they, the officers experienced a higher accuracy rate in reading tags with the LSAG system. In addition to that, it has the ability, its camera system, to read tags at a distance of two and a half to three lanes away, as opposed to the other one that would only pick up tags from about one lane away. And in addition to that, LSAG is actually used in 23 different agencies here in Georgia, including Atlanta Police Department and Georgia State Patrol. It is because of those reasons, those main primary reasons there, that the Police Department would recommend awarding the bid to LSAG North America in the amount of $21,505.
Does any Board member have a question or comment? Mr. Stamey?
Jason, I know you returned one, you was given a full refund. Was that amount on that one you turned in the exact same cost as this?
It was actually a little more, the previous one that we bought. So this one that we're looking at getting is actually a little bit less than the first one that we bought. It was, I think, around 23, if I'm not mistaken.
What was the maintenance, the year maintenance on that?
The maintenance on this is a yearly maintenance of $1,600.
What about the one we turned in? We pay any maintenance on that?
Um, I don't know right off what the maintenance was on the one that we turned in. I know just, basically, our main issue with that is, if I'm not mistaken, it was a company that was actually out of Europe, and that it was apparently very proficient in reading these European tags, and for some reason it just had issues with reading Georgia plates, with the number of different plates and prestige tags that we have in Georgia. It just had difficulty picking it up, and the accuracy rate was just horrible. But, I don't know, do you know the maintenance contract on that one? Kimberly Monast here is actually our research and development specialist and handles all of our grants, may be able to answer that question.
Good morning. The original was $23,399, and that, it did include a year's worth of maintenance, so actually the amount's going to be about the same. If that, the new one is at 21 with a $1,600, you're going to be a little bit less. But the previous system used a neural transmission system that learned as it went along. Unfortunately, it hadn't learned yet, and we were not available for its learning curve, which took about nine months. We had no problems with the federal system. It is a JAG grant that comes directly from the Department of Justice. However, they are aware of the concerns that we've had and how we have managed on quarterly reports to explain how we're going through the system. It is 100% federal money. It has been returned to the county. We have not returned it to the feds because it's a four-year grant, and we still have two and a half years left on it. So as long as we proceed, get the new vendor, get up and running, and do exactly what we said we were going to do in the grant, we're fully compliant and everything's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bowman?
Before you sit down, how are we doing on grants, Police Department-wise?
How are we doing on the grants? As far as compliance or as far as acquisition?
Acquisition.
Slower than I'd like.
Compliance is, you know, I don't really care about the compliance. I don't want to get the money in there.
Well, you do care about compliance because we can be able to acquire any if we're not compliant. As far as acquisition, not as well as we'd like. Federal money is still there, state money, not as much. From a grant perspective, most of our state money is actual pass-through money from the federal government that they are required to keep 20% and give 80% to the localities. So in essence, it's all federal money, but the state has been a lot stingier than in past times because there's just not as much money to go around. It is hurting everyone. There are a number of grants that I have applied for over the years and have been able and been successful in receiving, and they're either discontinued this year. ONDCP, the Office of National Drug Control Policy, discontinued a grant that we got a $26,000 system on two years ago. There is a grant called Resource Knowledge Base Grant that we got another system for narcotics on. Project Safe Neighborhoods has been discontinued at our level. The Northern District of Georgia got $200,000 for the entire Northern District, and because we do not have enough gun violence, thank you, in our county, we did not qualify.
And that's a good thing.
That is a very good thing. The better, the less crime we have in our county, the harder it is to get grants. I mean, that's just how it is. They are going to allocate more money to places that need it more, and we do have a lot of needs, and we are, you know, working with different things. I've looked into foundation grants more this year. There are a lot of smaller grants, Targets and Merrill Lynch and Georgia Met Life and different kind of things that we wouldn't normally look at, but because the county has established a 501(c)(3), we have a little bit more eligibility than we used to. So there's a few openings that we're checking out, but it's tough going. I mean, y'all have been doing budgets for a long time. You know the money is, it's hard, but I'm looking.
Okay, thank you. That's all right.
Anybody else? All right, if there are no further questions or comments, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to LSAG North America in the amount of $21,505, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. And the final item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase one Harley-Davidson police motorcycle, and that's exhibit number four.
Yes, ma'am. Back in August of 2010, one of our motorcycles was totaled in an accident when another motorist struck it. We've been working to replace that motorcycle. The insurance company did cut the county a check in the amount of $15,780. An RFP was sent out to eight local and area vendors for another motorcycle. Only two vendors responded to this request. That would be Clayton County Harley and Stone Mountain Harley. The difference in the two is only $200. The Police Department would recommend the bid to go to Clayton Harley for several different reasons, and I have with me this morning Sergeant Ron Patton, who is actually over the motor unit, who you probably have attached to the paperwork here, a letter that he wrote explaining the reasons and the justification for going with Clayton, and he's actually here this morning to be able to give you some more details on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One of the main reasons we'd like to go with Clayton County is because it's a time issue, and time is always valuable for us and everybody else, too. And Clayton, I've been, I've been able to deal with Clayton and Stone Mountain Harley-Davidson because I started out with a '07 bike, and now I have a 10, a 2010. And the customer service and the time with Clayton County, they intend, they perceive us as a priority, more or less than, and they get us in and get us out. And on the other side, with Stone Mountain, we really hadn't had that same type of service. And plus, they're a little closer, and the amount of time and money it takes us to get up there and get it back into service is one of the big reasons. Also, another reason we'd like to go with Clayton County is because of the type of warranty they're trying to, we're trying to get, and it assists us when we're doing out-of-town details. I know we've cut back, we got to cut back on a lot of things, and this warranty will help us if something happens, like, for instance, for their, we went up and assisted with Athens' Clark County funeral with the passing of the police officer up there, and if something happened to the bike, warranty issued, we could have went to the Harley-Davidson up there, and our warranty, or Clayton County's warranty would cover us up there in regards. Stone Mountain would not. Stone Mountain's deal directly with Stone Mountain's grant, and Clayton's Harley is a nationwide grant, I mean, not grant, but a...
Warranty.
Warranty.
Well, I know Ms. Wiley had a comment on the sign-off sheet questioning whether or not the responsiveness was part of the bid specs when those were put out. As far as being able to get the service more quickly, was that part of the RFP or the bid?
I don't recall seeing that specifically in that RFP.
Well, in regards, in regards to service, if a bike goes down here and we take it to DOT, it would take a couple, it would take time for Stone Mountain to come get, pick up the bike, because every, what we have to do with Granite or Stone Mountain, we have to call ahead of time and get an appointment, and they will give us a time where they can come, a timeframe to come get the bike. With Clayton County, we can call them, and they say, yeah, bring it on up, and we can get in and out of service with a more timely manner. And with Granite, Stone Mountain, we have to shut the bike down and it's out of service for possibly a day, two days, maybe even three, depending on what's wrong with the bike.
Ms. Wiley, how, I know that on the unit price itself, Clayton County was the lesser of the two, but with the 36-month maintenance agreement, it put them about $200 higher. What is your opinion on, if it was not included as part of the RFP, can it be considered in determining who was, can you use most responsive in determining who we award the bid to if it was not included in the original paperwork?
My preference would have been for that to be a specific requirement in the RFP. I do think Sergeant Patton has made some compelling arguments why we should go with the higher bidder, so I think in this instance, those compelling reasons would warrant accepting their recommendation. I just think in the future, we need to be clearer in our bid specs if we are relying upon that, and obviously we are for public safety purposes, that we put those specifications in the bid.
Okay, thank you. Does any Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the purchase of the Harley-Davidson motorcycle to Harley-Davidson of, I guess that's, what, Clayton County?
Yes, ma'am.
Of Clayton, Harley-Davidson of Clayton County, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to planning and zoning services, we have a resolution requesting approval of a streetlight district for the Marshes Vineyard subdivision. Our presenter is Bert Foster of Building and Inspection Department. That's going to be exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I come before you today with a request from the homeowners in Marshes Vineyard for four additional streetlights to be added to their existing streetlight district. As part of their application process, they submitted a petition which represents all 95 property owners in the subdivision, with 63% being in favor of this request, which is a 66 percentage of the population. Staff has reviewed this request, and we recommend approval.
Does any Board member have a question or comment? If not, I believe this lies in Mr. Auletta's district, and I will look to you for a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of the April 4th and April 18th regular meeting minutes. I had a couple of grammatical corrections. Are there any additions to the minutes? Okay, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Auletta, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We're moving on to public comments. In this portion of the meeting, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. They must sign their name and address and specific topic that they wish to speak about, and they will be allowed to address the board for five minutes. We had one citizen who did sign up for public comment, Mr. Steve Richardson of 207 Wind Drive in Hampton, and he's here to speak to the board about the county wrecker ordinance. Good morning, Mr. Richardson.
Good morning, ma'am.
You have five minutes.
The last time we spoke, you said two weeks, and two weeks is up, so I'm here to see what we come up with.
We're going to the county manager, Mr. County Manager.
I was waiting for my comment section of the ordinance to update you on the wrecker services committee's review of the applications over the course of the last two weeks. Should I go ahead and give you that now?
Please do.
It'll be okay, Steve.
I'll sit down. I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing. It's been eight years, so...
The wrecker services committee met, we had a chance to meet, compile the current applications and update those, and they took last Tuesday, the 26th of April, to meet jointly and visit four, actually five sites of the current applicants, and applied the current ordinance to those applications, and it's their recommendation that the four following services be approved as service providers under our ordinance. That includes Swanson's Towing and Recovery, Elkins Wrecker Service, Corner Lot Towing, and Wrecker One Incorporated.
Is that an action that we have to take, or that's...
I would like to put that to you in the form of a recommendation that Swanson's and Elkins continue as approved service providers, and Corner Lot and Wrecker One be added as approved service providers.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members?
Not a chance.
Mr. Holder?
Just a question. But are you looking at service areas, or you're looking at rotating, or...
That is a, that's a question that the wrecker committee will have to address.
They have not done that at this time.
No, they have not. They just had a chance to visit each site to make sure they were qualified under the ordinance and the new ULDC provisions, and this is their finding. They'll take it from here. We also are looking at an updated ordinance, which will clarify a lot of things.
Mr. Stamey?
But under the ordinance, does it require that the person, that the wrecker service be a leasing, or they have to be actual property owner? the, uh, current applications and, uh, update those, and they took last Tuesday, the 26th of April, um, to meet jointly and visit, uh, four, actually five sites, um, of the, of the current applicants, and, uh, applied the current ordinance to those, uh, applications, and it's their recommendation that, uh, the four following services, uh, be approved as service providers under our ordinance. Uh, that includes Swanson's Towing and Recovery, Elkins Wrecker Service, Corner Lot Towing, and Wrecker One Incorporated.
Is that an action that we have to take, or that's...
I, I would like to put that to you in the form of a recommendation that, uh, Swanson's and Elkins continue as approved service providers, and Corner Lot and Wrecker One be added as approved service providers.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members?
Not a chance.
Mr. Holder?
Just, just a question, uh, Butch, are you looking at service areas, are you looking at rotating, or...
That is a, um, that's a question that the, um, the wrecker committee will have to address.
They have not done that at this time?
No, no, they have not. They just had a chance to, uh, visit each site, um, to make sure they were qualified under the, uh, ordinance and the new, uh, ULDC provisions, and, uh, this is their finding. They'll take it from here. We also are looking at an updated ordinance, which will clarify, um, a lot of things.
I have a question, ma'am.
Mr. Staney?
Butch, under the ordinance, does it require that the person, that the wrecker service be a leasing, or they have to be actual property owner?
Uh, property owners, and, or, you know, have a, uh, I, I'm not sure it speaks directly to a leased piece of property, but they have to be a, um, um, I, I guess, a...
Well, I've heard different, I've heard different comments concerning that, that they could, they could actually lease, or they could actually have, they actually physically have to own real property in the county in order to conduct business here. I'm just trying to verify that.
And, and I can, I'll double-check that for you, but all I know is that under the ordinance, these are the recommendations, that these two companies be added as approved service providers.
Okay.
So they met the, uh, requirement, um, the requirements as listed currently.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Alletta?
Since, is it Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir.
Has commented so many times before the board, is it appropriate to see if he has any input on this or not? I don't know if it's appropriate, but...
Certainly.
Since he's been before the board.
Wrecker One bought a piece of dirt over on 130 Bellamy Place that was paid for. There was nothing but a dirt lot. And it's, we were told in writing by the county that she could not have a wrecker service there because she didn't have a building on that lot. So you, whether, whether, it doesn't specify in the ordinance that you have to own or lease the facility, but it specifies that you have to have the building on that, on the premises. It specifies that. Now, she went and spent over half a million dollars to do what she did out there because, because of that. Now, we're opening up a whole nother can of worms if that's what we want to do, that's fine, but we've done this for eight years, and now we're redoing the ordinance, and the county attorney, uh, we don't understand why we're redoing the ordinance, because there's nothing wrong with the ordinance. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what the rules are. I'm not here to go to bat for anybody, I'm here to figure out what the rules are.
The ordinance, the current ordinance, is the rule.
But you want to change it, and we don't know why, why, what's wrong with it, that you want to change.
The ordinance has not changed at this point in time. Um, just like, uh, Mr. Holder mentioned right there, uh, there, there's a question about how the, uh, the wrecker service will be applied. Uh, there are a lot of outstanding questions that we're looking into to make it a much, in, in my mind, a much more orderly, clearly-defined, updated ordinance. But we're operating under the current ordinance, and my recommendation is that those, those services be approved.
But, but we're not operating under the corner ordinances correctly.
Any questions or comments from Board members? All right, the, and the item that we've been asked to take by the county manager is simply to approve four companies, um, for wrecker services in Henry County under the current established ordinance. And it, with that, I need a motion to amend the agenda and to approve the four companies referenced by the county manager.
They don't all qualify.
They're, I'm asking, I'm asking for a motion to approve based on the county manager's recommendations.
Well, I'm asking that a citizen, that you table it, because I can prove they don't qualify.
I, 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 I'm just asking that you follow the, the committee's recommendations.
I'm asking that you follow the ordinance that you wrote that took you five years to write.
Madam Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes.
We're right in the middle of two things going on. We got public comment going on that we should exhaust.
We do.
And then we should step over to the county manager's comment, and at that point, take the, take the recommendation.
You have three minutes for pub, for the remainder of your comments, Mr. Richardson.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but last two week, two weeks ago, you told me you'd have all these ordinances and everything done, it's not done, so I'll just sit down and we'll get, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then, the item before us is the recommendation of the county man, of the county manager to approve four wrecker services for, um, providing wrecker services in Henry County, so I need a motion to amend the agenda, to add this item, and to approve those four recommendations.
Madam Chairman, make a motion.
Amend the agenda and add the wreck, the modified records to the agenda, and, um, vote on it. Make the motion to approve.
Uh, just, we, we've not modified anything yet.
No.
Well, he, you just, you, that's the updated version, correct?
Just update the, just to update the approved vendor list.
Update the service proof list, excuse me.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the agenda and to approve the four companies recommended by the county manager.
Correct.
And that's your motion, okay? I need a second.
So...
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Did you have anything else for public comment, Mr. County Manager?
No, I do not.
Okay, Ms. Wiley, anything for public comment? Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, May 16th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, May 17th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular board meetings. Friday, May 7th, all county offices will be closed for a furlough, and Monday, May 30th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. Monday, June 6th at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, June 7th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Staney, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.[1756.76][1756.76](CROWD NOISES) I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Staney, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and a resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holder.
Say.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman.
Say.
Second by Mr. Staney, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. We stand adjourned.[1797.11]